Leave and uh it's time, so we'll ask Kevin Dale, I think we'll leave and work prayer before we start.
Rebound please. This is our most special having the Father come first of all, I'll tell you thank you Father. Father, I want to thank you for this, this marriage board. Father, I just ask you just looking on the miracle one out of America. Father, I ask you a special blessing on the foster family tonight. Father, I ask you just looking on seeking to show you. Father, I ask you just be with us every year, just play with us, travel, race and all change your name.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, David. Okay, I got two proclamations I want to read. One of them is far as God, thank you, King. Oh, you gonna, you gonna want to hear?
Adeline playing golf in her house.
Oh, okay, you did a good get there.
Did you, no, I, someone has to stay behind and take care of boy.
Uh, I'm just gonna read it off. It says, whereas the New Omni Bulldog Girl Golf Team has completed a successful twenty-five season in a merging as a girls' four-way state champions, as well as having achieved a twelve-one record and winning the Borderbacks individually at Kentucky National and then with the Invitational. And that's a four-straight championship and the team finished second overall in all-state classifications. Uh, Coach Anderson is his seventh state championship and fifth with the Girls Golf. Whereas head coach Shane Sanction, assistant coach Jeffrey King, and all the players of the Girls Golf Team are to be commended for their hard work and dedication. And the following players will participate in the Girl Golf Program, which recently concluded with a state championship tournament to win Lucy King and Adeline Bailey. Whereas the city wants to particularly recognize and commend the following players for their individual accomplishments. Adeline Bailey, twenty-twenty-five state championship, several medalists, and Adeline Bailey and Lucy King were both selected on the Mississippi Association of Coaches Four Way All-Star Team. The city's desire that this proclamation of the city be made to recognize these players and their coaches for their hard work and accomplishment. Is therefore claimed by the mayor and board of aldermen for City of New Omni that the city takes great pride in the accomplishments of New Omni, uh Bulldog's Girl Golf Team, and congratulates them on their hard work and accomplishment. So claimed this third day of June twenty-twenty-five on the ceiling of City of New Omni. So thank you, I'll be, yeah. You probably making a lot of golf tournaments.
We just got back from Greenville, Sunday night, did laundry, and then left out, got home at two-thirty, left out at seven-thirty, Monday, so it's a lot.
Uh, we also got one for the tennis team. They completed a successful sa- season and merging as class four-way state champions for the sixteenth time in twenty-two years, and eight consecutive titles since twenty-eighteen. Uh, Coach Josh Griffin led the Bulldog's uh tennis team to a state title in his first year as a Tennessee head coach. And we had several players make Wednesday to make all-state. Heidi Clayton won a four-way girls' singles state champion for her third consecutive time. Hunter Henson and Gregory Nelson, four-way double-state champion for the second consecutive time. Matthew Bennett and Kedron, I mean Matthew Duritt, John Bennett, four-way double champion finalists. Liz Thau and Jacob Chris, four-way mixed double-state champions, but Jacob second consecutive. Corey Clayton and Emma Claire Farrell, four-way double-state champions, and that's Corey second consecutive. Twenty-twenty-five North Mississippi All-Stars were Heidi Clayton, Lily Stoudt, and Gregory Nelson. Twenty-twenty-five All-State teams, Heidi Clayton, Lily Stoudt, Gregory Nelson, Hunter Henson, Corey Clayton, Emma Claire Farrell, and Jacob Chris. And the full roster was Heidi Clayton, Lily Stoudt, Gregory Nelson, Hunter Henson, Corey Clayton, Emma Claire Farrell, Jacob Chris, Matt Blackburn, Matthew Duritt, Braden Bowman, Michael Hurd, Kendra Bennett, Douglas Smithy, Julia Anna Langley, Tralia Bennett, Lacy Carruthers, Alisa Castillo, Wake Parker Jarrett, Olivia Hardy, Parker Henson, Mason Todd, Amelia Cooton, and Wes Union. And it's also claimed that this uh, to honor these young men and women for winning the state championship and his coaches as well, and congratulates them for their hard work. So I think they, they want win regularly, win state champions, tennis team does. To be honest, I don't, I don't believe I know anywhere else does that beat state champion that's by as many years. Does a great job with them too. So uh, we're gonna start off with a public hearing, the reason two-ten East Main Street, from SN eight to TD, DTC. You got anything you want to add to that area?
It's just going from a residential to a commercial center.
On two-ten East Main?
Yes.
So that's, we talked a little about that last one.
Yeah, we just sent here.
Sent here for the day, yeah. Y'all hundred forty times down there on the corner, am I right?
Yeah, the old uh.
Favorite done one.
Mower house.
Oh, mower house, okay. Uh, what's well the four up there? Anybody here, anybody here for the mower?
Yeah, the mowers are here and I'm here. I've actually already sold the house to them, so I hope it works out.
We did, they uh, Cindy Ballard and Bruce Ballard are the ones who are actually buying, have bought the house, and Cindy, if you could just tell them a little bit about what you're going to do with the house.
Sure, sure. I mean, we're small, it's a venue for smaller, it's like rehearsal dinners, bridal tea, showers, birthday parties, just a small venue.
Nothing super commercial, and I will represent, so you can give me my word, I've talked to all of them, all of the neighbors, and they're all not only not objecting to it, but they're in favor of it. Because right across the street, Bob and my Francis Monroe are friends of theirs and and everybody, I put it this way, everybody I've talked to is in favor of what they're doing because it's just basically going to do what Cindy said to life refreshments and coffees and teas and meetings and women there and stuff like that. So I'll be, they'll be glad to answer any questions, I will too, but I, I think we've already presented it to the zoning commission and their committee. Is on the more good with it? Uh, that must be my will, I'll say for Kevin Dale, any other questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye, opposed, what do you carry?
Okay. A personal opinion from my experience for vintage market, for a small business in this area. Oh, it's for a variance?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we have purchased the vintage market here in town, and we're asking for a variance on signage for the windows. Um, we made a considerable investment to buy the business, to get everything up to code, um renovations, trying to make this a memorable dining destination here in town. Think of great venue downtown to have. Uh, we are creating jobs, paying property tax, uh, collecting and meeting sales tax, tourism tax, and it would greatly help us to be known as a dining destination and just a retail shop. We had some of our local folks think it's a, a garage shop or a retail shop, would greatly help us, and we would certainly appreciate that. I think I've given pictures ahead of the meeting, that's the ones that we're looking at. Something that would be along the Deco lines of, of the restaurant itself, and something would be very, very helpful and classy looking.
And it wasn't like a sign, wasn't it? And it's just, it just figured it fits.
Right.
Uh, y'all remember? Any question, anybody got any question?
Uh, who's got a question? Well, I, yeah, I guess, um, you know, our concerns in the last meeting were if we allow this sign, what's to prevent other signs from being in other businesses that our, our codes go against? Um, I'm being, I has anything to add to that, not saying I'm against it necessarily, just.
I think a part of being a decision, and I signed in the business before, am I right?
Yes, the sign was actually just in the story.
Yeah.
You know, so, and then they had it pitched, and the ordinance, who basically window signs cannot be neon or LED, and then anything that's within three foot of the window is considered a window sign.
So Mike, that's my concern is the neon sign, I mean, are there other options for you to use another sign? And I know in the ordinance it says you can have it back from the window. Cause I, I understand what you're dealing with, cause I, I said that, you've got a great food, sometimes it's not hard to see, but I think the precedence of a neon sign downtown.
It's actually an internal lit sign, it's not a neon sign.
Well, okay.
If that, if that's part of the ordinance, I'm not sure if it is or not. It's neon.
So what is the problem with it being away from the window like the ordinance currently states?
The way the entrance is structured, if we brought it back to three feet, it would be a danger to hit somebody in the head as they came through.
We're talking about the sandwich sign, right?
Correct. We had the sandwich sign, and then we had a similar one with the blue ice cream.
Where is the blue bell sign, where would that be?
The sandwich side sign is on the left side of the front door. Uh, and the blue bell sign is a twenty-three inch wide, uh, eighteen inch tall on the right-hand side. Just to let people know what we're doing.
So if the sandwich sign is behind the door, is it still a possibility of it hitting someone? If you put switch sides, is it a possibility?
Well, the way the building is structured there, and the way the entryway comes in, that is actually a wide walk path right there, so it would be a danger to hit someone if it's not tucked up out of the way.
So you, you say it is a neon sign?
Yes, originally it was a neon sign, I don't know if it thinks already that it is.
Can I show you a picture?
Yeah.
Please. Didn't that go platform, the underneath it, but you got, it got taken.
Right. Or like, I think that was on those uh, I think so. That part, that one. Yeah, I'll be right here. I doubt that was supposed to be here.
What, this is for two signs? I'm asking.
This one may have important.
That was internally, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that turned three-fourteen. It's sweet. Most likely, I don't know if it's campus. Hope you like it totally here. Good.
It would greatly help us to, to know what we're, we get people coming into town that don't know, and we actually still have local folks that don't know that it's what we're doing there.
Yeah.
Do you have a table when it says you walk in, that little platform on the right, you got a table over there too, don't you? Like up on the platform area?
More of decoration for liability purposes, it's not suitable for seating there.
So neither the seating, neither the tables on the platform are for, it's more for decoration on both sides of the?
Correct. She changes it out with like different seasonal type decorations there. It's not a safe place to ask someone to step up to them, risk a pole.
So the, um, the sandwich sign is, you know, y'all are, or at least it's called in the last meeting, a vintage sign that was original to the building, what about the blue bell sign, is there anything?
It's not.
Okay.
Of the two, the sandwich sign would be more important.
I mean, the thing is, if we, if, if we were to allow the, the sandwich sign, that would at least make, there'd be an argument for that since it's original to the building, but allowing the blue bell sign would allow anybody to put any sign whatsoever.
The sandwich one is the most important to us for sure.
Question, uh, do you have to have the neon on the sandwich sign?
Um, can't see it when it's off, we left it hung there, but if it's on the windows regard, you can't see it well.
So the sandwich can be lit up with the neon or not?
Well, the sandwich is all that's lit up on it.
It's all.
Yes, that's up, all the lemonade's on it, it's just the letters of the word sandwich.
My concerns are kind of like keeping part of the precedent that we're setting, because our ordinance, we've not allowed any other business to have it in the window like that, we prohibit neon signs from every business in the way. I wish there's a way we can, you know, back that, but three feet, some, but you say there's no way that you, that way, when we classify it as window sign, have it on the wall, on the bar, on something other than the window.
There's others on the same street that are all next, doesn't make sense.
We didn't, I'm, I'm not aware of it.
What, what are you talking about, Mike, which one?
So there's other signs, there's one for, I believe it's a nail place or something, and then another one that Niko's on the same street side.
Window signage?
Yes.
What is a Niko's window sign?
I'm sorry.
What is a Niko's window sign?
Open. So, yeah, the open signs has always been here before the ordinance was passed. So they've always been just kind of, you know. But now, as far as the nail sign, if the nail sign is down below you, they have been sent the letters, not the light. I mean, we're definitely not asking for anything that would be unsightly, very classy looking, bits of decor.
For the, for just the sake of discussion, I mean, I, I do think there is a case for a special exception to be made, since this is unique to this building, it's original to the building, and uh, you know, I, I do think we could, I'm not saying we should, I'm saying we could make a special exception. I think we have.
Original to the building or original to the previous business?
Yeah.
Well, it's not original to the building, it's just the previous owner of any part of that, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, I guess the original's ability was not, it's not from, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, you're right. And that gets pretty hard to find, like what's, what's original and what's not, so.
Again, we're trying to create jobs, be a, a citizen downtown.
But I mean, is there an option, is there an option for another sandwich sign besides that?
Yeah, I want you to advertise for food, you need to stick out and let people know that you sell food, but the neon, if we let you, how are we gonna justify picking and choosing who can have a neon? Cause I'm, that's my only issue.
And the last thing we would want to do was be something that would be godly or distracting, and that's very classy, and it's the only reason we're, we're here asking for it.
Would there be an option maybe for uh, some kind of decal on the windows? If you got it on the door, you can put sandwiches, ice cream, whatever, on the window outside, can you hear? As long as it's not over a certain percentage of the?
Thirty percent.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know if I understood your answer or heard your answer. If the sandwich sign was three feet off on the other side, behind the door, when you opened the door, and it was on, if you're looking at your building, it was on the right side, it's still in the way?
Right. The way.
Identical, I think.
The way it opens up right there, it would be a liability for somebody, you can back it up. The way the platforms are in the windows, it became a liability that if somebody hit their head on it. And we don't want to do anything that'd be disrespectful, and we've had the two days it was on before we asked to turn it off. A lot of compliments on that accent of downtown and fit with the decor of the, of the restaurant. We just invested a whole lot of money in it. Be very helpful to, to draw more people in there.
Now, well, but. Reagan, is there anything that we can do that, because I, I a hundred percent agree with Mike wanting to identify as a restaurant, because it does kind of get lost in the shuffle there. Is there anything we can do to make it where we could limit this type of sandwich to restaurants downtown, I mean, is it?
We'd have to chase ordinance, yeah, we could do that. Are there any, that would be really difficult law ordinance.
Yes.
I know New Albinex, there's like it's planned, like fix variety of modern areas, do we have that same situation?
It's in the, uh, yes.
It is part of doing the next now, okay. So, we're eventually gonna bring up New Albinex, which go up to the pre-existing sign ordinance and fix a variety of things in it, uh, not sure exactly, but probably in the next year, I would think.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we could easily make that change with that, make exception for restaurants.
I mean, I.
This is, it applies, this is not just the downtown district, this is citywide convenience stores and?
No, it's just the downtown core.
So neon's allowed?
Yeah, outside of the downtown core, they're allowed.
Yeah, like I said, this puts you on the spot in a big way, but uh, you're the main street person, do you have any opinion on this? You don't have to give an opinion, just ask it.
No, I, sign ordinances and containing the growth and consistency downtown is important. This is a little bit different in that fact that it is a vintage sign that was in the building, and I can tell you right now, there's not another sign in another building on Main Street or Bankhead that would qualify for vintage. So it's really kind of a one-and-done case.
How long's it been in the?
Probably ten plus years.
Well, that probably predates our sign ordinance as long as ten years ago, but I'm not gonna be here below ten.
I think the original sign ordinance was put in place about two thousand and six, and that's.
Oh, I, I meant to work that long when we did it.
No.
But that didn't change that part, stayed the same.
It stayed the same, like it done had a finish.
I mean, I, I like the sign, I'm on the sign, but I want to be careful that I'm not making an exception just because I like something, uh, so, um, but.
I mean, the, the purpose of variance is for unique situations, it's not.
I think this is a unique situation.
It's not to create a precedent. Well, if you're undecided, what you could do is not approve of variance at this time, just not enforce it until you make a decision. I think constructive double lock for variance again, decide when you go. But uh, you don't need to act similarly or similarly to such way.
Um, well, if you're right, then there won't be another situation.
But I could cut my, yeah.
If I went, she says.
But if they buy something and bring it in to this vintage, that's where we don't get in trouble.
This sign will bring you trouble.
Yeah, right, but some people.
This is.
This is original to the building, it's just.
It was just there.
Yeah, yeah, so it's not, so you could, yeah, if you purchased something that was not in the building, that's different than what, we're, we're granting a special exception one time theoretically, to in this one case, if we were to grant that special exception. Um, and we could say that if you buy it off eBay, then that's not, we're not gonna grant you an exception.
So if you go to Los Angeles and buy it and bring it back, it's not, yeah, we might say that, but that, it's not.
I just think we need to make sure we understand what we're doing. I don't have a problem with a sign, I want them to be able to murder, but I just want to make sure that we're covering ourselves out of the road for what possibly to go up in windows, because I don't, I'm not for this type of sign being downtown. But I want you to be able to promote your, your business, because it is hard to identify as a restaurant. So I ask of you, Reagan, for your advice on how to work, what we do, or?
Well, I'll give a opinion, if you give a variance, you have to give a variance to other, other similarities, situators, requests. Now, if they're not similar, then you don't, but uh, really going to not enforce this ordinance, I'll just really watch it, it's like. But I just say make sure you know what you want.
So you said earlier, in Mike's particular catch right now, is not enforce what we have and then work together to get the wording right, does that make sense to you?
I think it does, I think the cover's there, that we have to enforce it. I mean, we, you agree to screw that?
I, I do, because if I don't enforce that one, then everybody else starts turning theirs on.
So Mike mentioned, did you mention that Niko's has a neon sign?
Isn't that just open sign?
There's none of that, they shouldn't be, like, they're not allowed, but if you read the ordinance, that, any neon signs, not allowed.
So y'all just tell me what you want to do.
So if we, if they hog it up, we'll, we'll table this for the month. Or I suppose you can deny this time and ask them to turn it off, because it's gonna stay up there off stage when they want, the order is set.
Hey, I agree, you know, it's a good sign, but I just don't want to, you know, set this one and it be a pan ox, not really clear, and then they start popping up, you know, bigger and bigger.
Do we have any more open signs, like Niko's?
They're the bunch, damn it.
So they all need to be cut off, sounds like, if you're not gonna change it.
But did you say the ordinance says something about vintage signs? We're, we're.
They are.
We were talking about possible, yeah.
We're gonna, we're going to, and if we did this, accept a variance for a vintage sign, and that would be for me outside the car.
Because.
Do you imagine vintage, but do we have a definition of vintage stuff?
I feel a little bit in it, everything you Google, it just picks up pictures of, oh, like, from like nineteen eighty back, it's one of the neon signs that's popping up.
That sign may be nineteen eighty back.
It's probably only, I mean, it's, yeah.
So.
It's, yeah, it's older.
Well, if you got a bunch of signs, Mike says the table is for a month, and go take a look at the other signs, so you know what you're dealing with, really, to watch repercussions are.
Well, yeah, the wisest thing I think to do it seems like is to, is to table it and, and really iron out what we really want out of this ordinance. Um. Because we, we already apparently are not enforcing our, our, our rules if, if they're open. Signs that don't fit the, the codes. And we need to figure that out. Maybe we, maybe we allow open signs though.
I make the motion to table it. And reconsidering our two Ivy.
I've got a multiple wheel, I would say. I'll say, say my group, any other questions or discussions?
I have a question. Does that allow us to during the interim?
Sounds like that's what Reagan for this would. Right, Reagan?
You know, it doesn't allow you to do it necessarily.
No, I thought he said not even for.
We talked about not doing that and we could not enforce it, but that's. What we're saying now doesn't necessarily allow him to light the sun, so that's. That's seconded it and we're discussing it.
Right now, he's not allowed to light it.
Yeah, technically, you know, um, he's not allowed to. So that would be the problem with table it, if we go through with this. You know, we could also just make an ex, a, a special exception and, and still work on it and, and redesign ordinances. Of course, if we, if we do that, then we're gonna have to allow that in a month.
I've got a multiple second. Anybody, any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
I, uh, alright.
Any opposed?
I'll go ahead, I.
Okay. He does you much. Well, sure. Did you, I, I would, I would, I would, get that original, I'm taking that too. Okay. You get that, that's for, for table.
Where does that leave us for now?
Where? We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, I guess we're gonna have to meet again and iron this out, man. I wanna just table it forever. We just have to figure out what exactly we wanna do, cause we don't wanna mislead you or, you know.
I hate for you to light it and then it not work out and then have to turn it off. I'd rather if you turn it, if you're able to turn it on, be able to do it one time and not have to. Now it's all, now it's all back and forth. I'd rather it be.
My only concern is it's been seven months. We were originally told to ask for the, the evidence. And then we were told they were in the process of y'all rewriting ordinance, so. We're seven months in now.
So you're right.
Square one.
Was the sign lit today? So, was it lit today?
No, we haven't turned it on since we were asked to turn it off. But we're seven months in. And it was hoping to be fast for variance.
We will, yeah.
Cause we, we may can meet again before, I hope not, but they give us a few days, you know, give us time to look at everything and, I mean, meeting it. We appreciate it.
Alright, all in favor? We already done that?
Sorry, Reagan.
I said, I, no, he was, yeah, I.
No, you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five, who is? Okay. Uh, nobody, anybody here with. Tisha Powell, Small Business Administration. See anybody, so we'll move on from middle business, be, I'll be first.
They are bored. Gotta pay a few bills, cut off that. Still can't look behind the first two items, that they're, uh, favorites on the communication system that, uh, get that good, we're on finished the construction on that and I hope next month. Well, please have one, one invoice left to pay on that. Uh, first was that legit for their, uh, for designing construction administration services, forty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars? And we have a prepaid request to, to graze power for private construction. Pay request number nineteen for seven hundred eighty thousand, eleven dollars and eight cents. Number twenty for seventeen thousand, three hundred sixty dollars. Pay request twenty-one, four hundred six thousand, ninety-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
Most of my Kevin down, pay these two, have a second. By Drew, any other questions or discussion? I'm in favor.
Ah, you opposed, most curious.
On the third, these are paid requests on the gas project that go on the west side of town. Remember we have a, uh, although it's seventy-five percent through the project, we have a ground breaking on that tomorrow. The village gene said it was okay to do that, so, uh, thank all that send invitations, eleven o'clock if y'all can make. Uh, so we have a prepaid request on that project. Again, this is all grant funded through the grant, uh, through, uh, the stems group, which is part and part of the transportation. Uh, pay request number three, the South Beach and Pike Lane Environmental for five hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Pay request four to cook cotton engineering for nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars. And pay request number two to cruise engineering for twelve thousand five hundred forty-five dollars.
Uh, you know, we, uh, most, but we'll have a second. Seeing the key, the other questions or discussion, I'm in favor.
Ah, you opposed, most curious.
Hey, the next side, we, we discussed a little bit last week. We, uh, uh, we need about a cou- couple of pickups, one, one for electrical, one for gas. And we're not really able to get anything on state contracts, so we did solicit bids for the trucks and we got, uh, th- these were the two lowest bids we got for a three-quarter ton. Ford pickup, uh, one is forty-eight thousand five hundred from Orange Crossing. And one is forty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-one from Metro Ford. We'd like permission to buy both of those trucks.
Most of my Canada, have a second. Seeing that Drew, any other questions or discussion? I'm in favor.
Ah.
You opposed, most curious.
May we also have permission to buy another, uh, vacuum excavator trailer? This is one of the things we use, uh, like, when, when you're digging. You can use this to, to dig and you, you don't run the danger of, uh, uh, you know, damaging other utilities and need, you know, pressure water that sucks the mud and that out and, uh, open up the hole. Uh, y'all looked at all these a couple of years ago when that, it had really been used a lot. We actually needed another one, uh, the demand is so high for the, for the equipment. We did, uh, we get, we got, uh, two bids. The low bid was, uh, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred eleven dollars and thirteen cents. Probably a near bid sound, like permission to buy that.
So I got most of my wheels second by Keith. Any questions or, I'm in favor.
Ah.
Any opposed, most curious.
We got a couple of things on surface equipment. Uh, y'all gave us permission to sell this truck about three months ago. We advertised the truck. We, uh, we got three different bids in on truck five. Uh, once the bids came in, the first two high bids, they would never show up to get the truck, so we went to the third bid, uh, Nick free in for a thousand, eleven dollars. It was for that hybrid truck that, uh, just kind of odd truck. We did sell the truck, uh, again, which we advertised on your own proper step. I think if they report that back, right, it's a little bit. Uh, we would like to clarify that for the piece of equipment surplus, one is a twenty-twelve, uh, all tank lucky truck, sixty foot lucky truck. Uh, we'd like to get that, uh, possibly in an auction. And then we have a three-quarter ton, um, four pickup truck. I don't have your model, I guess that's you, Frankie. Um, the transmission's out of the truck. That's one we're replacing with these two purchases. We'd like to declare those surplus and just focus then. We, we are going to check with other city parks on the three-quarter ton truck and make sure no one wants it. Yeah, I think it's already got two hundred thousand miles and the transmission's out, so I don't know if anybody's done it. Uh, if no one wants it, we'd like to, uh, uh, probably those in an auction.
I'm gonna, I lost my wheel, I have a second. Saying my, oh, any other questions or discussion? I'm in favor.
Ah.
Any opposed, most curious.
Maybe the last item I have is this new hire request of, of this individual, Gerald Waller, who's from Dickert Land, he's a former employee. Uh, with the Lick Department, like to hire one, uh, right away through, uh, the driver, uh, based around with Bush Hall operator.
Gerald Waller.
I got real tired of hearing you talk about his name.
This is not, this is not the king.
They made his friends, he's a prince of Dickert Land. So, Gerald, yeah.
Yeah, I have a second. Saying my dream, yeah. Alright, David, I'll leave the sign, sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, all in favor of Gerald Waller? Any opposed?
I'm in grades.
I've been knowing you, you did a Houston school, you always been something. Community development, Jim?
I just got a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Uh, I've, uh, shared with you the statistics for tourism in the state and for Union County in New Albany. This is the new thing, visitorism is beginning to share with communities and, um. I think we're positioned really well as far as tourism growth in the future for, for, um, New Albany. And especially once we get the park done and the river and then we pair that with tangled betrayal. Um, I think the future bright for tourism, so I appreciate that. Um, you've noticed that we also were, was named the best small town in the state of Mississippi by Atlas. That was a, that's a big, um, designation as well. Speaks to the tourism that's coming into New Albany. We're a, a hundred percent occupied downtown. We were being known as a shopping destination. And we're close to being known as an outdoor tourist destination, so the future is bright. And I also just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to him. Where's the company, and, um, I wish you best luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Good, Jim, in your report, you got Jay resigned. Can you talk about that and what, what happened when he resigned?
Um, other than he was not happy here from the very get-go, um, he, um. You know, he just resigned, so I can talk to him about it later, but he just was never happy really from the very beginning. Um, my suggestion is to, to, um, let Main Street manage that theater here, uh, like we used to when it was nineteen ninety-seven. When Main Street and the theater got renovated, uh, until we can kind of figure out the direction that we wanna go there.
So he's been what, New Albany or the job or?
Both of us. So, yeah.
Just talk to you about this, you think?
No.
I just think I got the same one you have, did get one day. Okay, uh, museum, Jim, you got anything other than your pocket?
Yeah.
Police department?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I've got nothing.
Good.
Got a few things, Mr. Mayor. I included. My, I'm trying to go in line here. Resilience purchase dispatch console, that's a, that's a new radio console that I'm, uh, y'all voted on for us, um, last year. And my town got everything ordered and, and all the equipment ends. And then there was a, the leasing agreement we found out just never got really completed. So we've gotten all that completed. I've talked to the mayor, uh, we've gotten initial paperwork signed. The mayor was out of town. Vice Mayor Will Tucker kind of signed some off on it, but I need to present this to the rest of the board. This is our basically four-year agreement for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Just lists out the schedule and how it's been paid, Reagan looked at it. Which is, uh, pretty straightforward. Percentage. We got one of the things between last year and this year, when they redid it, we got a lesser, uh, interest rate, which was good thing. I think the old was in the eights and this is in the sevens. So I guess I'm asking the board to vote on our financial agreement and the purchase, completion of purchase of the console right here.
Alright.
We don't, yeah, we're, we're. So I did, well, and you are assigned on it, so.
I think we're good at that.
Yeah, okay. So there's that, got that down. Alright. Alright, next one is an MOU from Northeast Mississippi Community College. This is basically a straightforward MOU, Reagan's already looked at. Basically they have police officers that work at the Northeast Mississippi campus here. And for our aspect of this, our police force working together, there's any immediate backup needs. If there's, uh, radio communication, they'd run through our dispatch. It kind of covers everybody in all legal aspects, so that. Pretty much is, is standard, straightforward. So, Reagan, do they develop on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm asking the board to accept the memorandum and understanding from, between Northeast Mississippi Community College of the New Albany campus. And the Nor-, uh, New Albany Police Department.
Most of my Drew, I have a second. I think I forward to any other questions or discussion?
I think Reagan, you're good. I don't think I've seen you. You're, you're good, man.
Alright, all in favor?
Ah, I hit, most curious.
The other one I really after looking at, after consulting with Frankie, this is basically. Is a continuation of our wireless communications permission based on Mizwin thing we signed up first time eight, thirteen point fifteen. And they automatically kind of renew us every five years to be able to operate on the Mizwin system. Uh, included that, after looking through a little, little more of that, I'm not sure exactly has been presented to the board, but I want to make the board aware of it. And, and the Frankie college is what we put in you.
That's just probably kind of, kind of late. More that.
No, wait, okay.
I was sure, I'm not sure.
That was mostly they, they, yeah, without, without hearing of it.
Yeah, I don't think. You fucking dumbass.
Yes. And I think basically that's what it was. They sent that out to say y'all want opt-out.
Yeah.
They were reading opt-out, is it?
No, but I don't. Yeah, I can't say a reason in the world, but matter of fact, there's more. There's probably ten times more on Mizwin system now than, than world when we originally got on back then, including fire, EMS, and so on and so. Alright. As you know, Clay Keener will be retiring at the end of this month after just total time of twenty-eight years of service. And evidently, he is requested to, to, uh, to retire with recognition of party. So he'll be retiring at the end of the month. And with him leaving, I have the board, mug Jeff Chilton and the assistant chief.
And most of my Kevin down, second by wheel. Any other questions or, yeah? All in favor?
Ah, yeah, most, most curious.
Alright, Mr. Mayor. In. In accordance with our tradition, Clay is currently serving as assistant police chief of the police department. While we are tagging down the gene, he's worked for twenty-eight years. In accordance with our tradition, the retiring officers and customary allowed to keep their service weapon they carry. Nation order, the approval to allow assistant chief Keener keep his nine levelled glove model forty-seven. To remember Charles Charles Robert X-ray seven seven zero upon your time from the yard plate.
That motion, but, for him second by wheel, any other questions or discussion? I'm in favor.
Ah, ah.
Most curious.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Last thing, we, we discovered a channel in the busy day court. There's four parking spaces, basically on the, on Carter. Not parking area designated directly from the municipal court, but the parking spaces that are on the street. That tend to have, when the officer come down, call it a blind spot right there. Especially those cars in the parking lot and those cars right there. I'm asking if the board would eliminate those four, those spaces on Carter, the, the long ways to get to.
Parallel parking.
Yeah, yes, yes. So what you got is a municipal police department. You got parking area right directly in front of it. And then there's four additional spaces, parallel parking on the other side of that.
Y'all have cones up on over here, I like.
Yes, and we're, we're trying to just eliminate that, cause they're trying to eliminate problems with crashes and so forth.
So, Kevin down, second by Keith, any other questions or, I'm in favor?
Ah, yeah, most, most curious.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
You need me a little copy of this or you already have it? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I got something I need to go do. I'm going to look to you.
I'm sure, just, uh, thank you.
Thank y'all.
So when's the surprise party for?
Here. That, I'm, I'm just gonna say that, that. I'm just gonna say that that me and him have been roommates, best friends since we were fifteen or sixteen.
That'd be my.
And and uh I just say everybody in the police department come out and see what we were upset about the other day. And he felt one way and I felt another, but I knew if I did it anyway, he'd just leave, so.
All right, Park Reg, Chase, you got anything?
Yes, sir. All right, pardon me since we're talking about Park Reg, I just want to say thank you publicly for everything y'all did this weekend helping out Park Palooza. It it was the most smoothly run event that we've had of the three. Uh, it's a great location. Y'all y'all went above and beyond and came through and I just I want to say thank you personally.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't have anything on the agenda for last, but the agenda was submitted. We just got back from our twenty twenty six, twenty twenty five conference in Bixburg. Uh, New Albany was instrumental in that association. We set records left and right, and everybody knows that this board and mayor has supported us over the years to be leaders in this organization. And uh it speaks volumes and a lot of them called and asked me how we've had such a good working relationship. And I say, uh, it's just been a long road, but we're there. We work together. That being said, um Deputy Chief Sides was reelected to the Northeast District Vice President, so he runs this area on the two side. And he was also chaired the board that does the chief's designation and chief officer designations. And Alderman White received his uh chief officer designation through Holly Springs Fire Department. It's guidelines that are set up that you have to meet. And basically, he's got it, you know, he's got a certificate now that says that he met the guidelines, strict guidelines of of being a chief fire officer. Uh, so we appreciate everything he's done uh for the state also. And uh, that being said, we know we appreciate you guys, like I said, really, really going up in there. Uh, and being a part of it, letting us serve and make changes statewide. And uh, Mayor, we appreciate everything and you know, you've been around us since two thousand and five. You've seen us up and down and. But you've always been a big supporter of the fire department and we'll miss you.
Thank you. That's a ten year term. So you gotta stick around another ten years. Is that right?
Uh, three, four, appreciate it.
A little quick. I submitted my month of report. Uh, at the zoning meeting, we had a request from the windshield doctor, not a four east. Play history for society variance. It was approved. The second one was a request from Ellis property three oh one East Main to subdivide oversized lots into three standard lots, and it was approved. And Mayor, I appreciate the almost ten years I got to work.
Oh, thank you. Enjoy.
All right, Eric, real quick, uh, I've had a lot of interest in uh number three. Uh, from I've talked to multiple people today and uh I really just want to make sure that I'm clear about this. And uh, there've been requests to set a public hearing thirty days round. Is that an appropriate thing to do? Uh, I know that we don't have to set a public hearing on this. All right. Um, but there've been multiple people called that have asked me to do that. Um, from talking to people today, um, this subdivision is not. How would you define this? This is not a variance or a rezoning. Is what is it considered a variance or not?
It's just dividing a hill beside a block into three lots. It's not really a variance because of variance is, you know. But it's just a subdivision of a lot.
So this is something that is normally granted.
Yes, we just done another one, one block up the street last night.
Okay. Um, well, what would be the procedure for setting a public hearing if we were going to do that? So that people who wanted to share their opinions could attend.
Why you have to invade motion? Deny it would have been the deny first might have voiced their opinion. I would.
Yeah, there there are some people here.
Opposition and the.
Yeah. But there there are some people who requested that who are not in town and went thirty one days.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to ask a question because it's my family that's asking to subdivide a lot. It's uh, we're not asking for rezoning. We're asking to subdivide a lot. And I would like to ask that y'all would do what you've been doing for other people and just be consistent. When other people have come here and asked to have a lot subdivided and and done that. And I it's my understanding that if a lot of people didn't show up tonight, you were going to criticize that, that this was your chance tonight. And uh, I would just ask you to do the right thing and treat our family the same way you've treated other people and be consistent. And I haven't lobbied in any of you, but I would ask you to do the right thing and vote tonight and treat us the same way that you've treated other people.
Now I speak, sir. Mayor Board of Alderman, I'm I didn't know I was gonna be here until not very long ago, but I'm here on behalf of the neighbors. Or the residents near the Ellis lot, I call it the Ellis lot. And that would be Bob and Mo, Francis Monroe, uh, Sale and Karen Lilly. And Chris Smith and his wife who live directly across the street in this property. I'm they, none of those people are in town. They're all out of town. They all wanted to speak. The notice of the of the variance on this was a notice for the zoning commission to consider this, which they did last night. But the board has not considered this and the residents of the neighborhood feel like they're entitled to a public hearing on this. So they can make their wishes known. Uh, and you know, I'm, I know you know I practice law and I'm not. Uh, if I was here as a lawyer, you know, it's pretty well said. Any lawyer who represents himself as a fool will find. So uh, I don't want to stand up here. I'm just here as a representative of those individuals, excuse me, those individuals. I mentioned plus all the other people in the neighborhood who have expressed a desire for a public hearing. I don't, I don't necessarily agree that a public hearing is not required for the alderman to hear this matter. In fact, I think it is required. And you know, the last thing anybody wants to done is any litigation over this. And I'm not saying there will or will not be litigation. And if uh Margaret is talking about the Coleman house and uh, as I'm not clear on that, I really hadn't talked to Logan. Is that already been approved?
Yes, sir.
Over with?
Yes, sir.
It's over with?
It's over with.
Okay, that is apples and oranges. If that's what you're talking about, treating you fairly. Because that that involved two buildings that already existed. There's no change of any kind of lots other than moving the center line where the two buildings wouldn't touch, almost touch each other as those did. They're not expanding the number of lots. There were two lots. There will still be two lots. And you know, I don't, I can stand up here and talk for a long time about this, but if you want to be fair. It would be fair to give these residents a hearing. Give them a thirty day or set it sometime when they would have noticed. I I'm representing to you. None of them knew that the board of aldermen was going would consider this tonight. They knew that the zoning commission would, and they some attended the zoning commission meeting. I didn't attend it. And that's what, but they're not here absolutely because they can't be, not because they don't want to be. And I would appreciate your setting up a public hearing. There's no reason, there's no reason not to do that because what would be the downside to the individuals who own the Ellis lot? No, they've they've said they're not gonna do anything with it, and they're certainly not gonna do anything in two or three weeks. So why not give them a public hearing if people think we'd like one?
Thanks. What is, what do y'all gonna build there? How?
We don't have, we don't have any plans to build anything. We had a chance to uh uh, this isn't rezoning. We had a chance to subdivide the lot. Other people have been subdividing lots, and we thought this would be a good time to do it. That's all, that's all it is. And it was my understanding that you give uh people in the neighborhood a chance to complain. It's rezoning. This is not rezoning. This is subdividing. And I think that's what y'all have been doing. I'm just asking y'all to do the right thing and treat us the same way you treat other people.
Is it a threat to you in any way if it did have a public hearing on it? If you're not gonna do anything with it and those people just wanna stay and they can't be here tonight, what what is the damage?
Well, I thought you were supposed to be here when when business was transacted, and I think this is.
That's my concern.
I think this is a lawyer.
The difference, the difference. Says on that and the sign that you are that it was up for consideration. And that's how you're aware of it as well as the neighbors and um.
Only the zoning, only the zoning commission, not this, not the board of all.
Well, there's no, so we're not approving any change. There's no change in any ordinance. It's that's the thing that that the lot, my understanding is it's overs, it's one oversized lot. They want to subdivide it and the way it's zoned, there is room for that. There actually lots are bigger than.
Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. We don't know if there is or isn't.
I can have.
He has the figures there.
We originally had talked about doing it before, and it just brought my attention that, hey John, that's gonna be less. What if you did it in four, it's gonna be less than a minimum square footage. Correct me if I'm wrong. So I'm going from every, I think it has to be five thousand square feet. Uh, minimum uh square footage to have a lot. Our lot is two hundred twenty eight by eighty five. Okay, so uh, we made the uh minimal square footage. We exceeded by one thousand one hundred sixty square feet, which is almost thirty percent, twenty nine point two percent. And uh, the frontage along the street for the lot has to be a minimum uh fifty feet. And ours will be seventy six, which is uh twenty six feet more, which is fifty two percent more than what the city has defined as an adequate block size.
Well, last night, the zoning board approved.
Yes.
So what sounds to me like you're wanting to do contested.
Now, the board of aldermen has to approve what the zoning board does. And this, I I'll also represent to you. And you can check me out on this, and I I'm not questioning what John's saying. I'm sure that measurements, I'm not sure they're right. I mean, we would like, my clients would like to have it surveyed and confirm that that's correct, although it may be correct. I don't have any idea one way or the other, but they would have a chance to do that if you would give them a reasonable time before you set a public hearing. The uh other thing is that when I, where my wife and I live now, where I grew up, y'all, most of you know where that is on Main Street. I read that to Bob Cornelius for a law office. And I signed with an agreement with the neighborhood and with the alderman basically in. A contract that if I ever really use that house for anything other than a law law office, it would go back to residential. Like it, it was residential at that time. So what I'm saying, if they're saying they're not gonna, if you're agreeing, if you're not gonna build anything and rent those houses and rent out houses. And if you agree to that, and if you would preclude yourself from renting any houses, I think you wouldn't have a problem. But we don't, nobody in the neighborhood wants a bunch of rentals, and that's what my friends and the neighbors want to come express to you. Yet at least be given their day in front of you because not only are you to consider the measurements, you're to consider the neighborhood. And the Supreme Court has said that variances should be considered exactly the same as zoning changes.
The issue is Bill, that that as I understand it, this is not per se, and I have to consult Reagan on this, a variance, is it? Or is it?
I'm so sure.
Yeah, that's that's the really, I I personally think that there's no harm in in letting these people express their opinions in thirty days. Uh, you know, no matter what I do in this situation, I'm not gonna, I'm not winning anything. Because I'm, you know, I'm gonna upset somebody. I would like to give my, you know, I'm not treating y'all any differently when I hear concerns. I'm not here. When I hear concerns from a from a neighborhood, any neighborhood, whether that's Northside or this neighborhood that I live in. Then I try to hear those concerns, but that's again, I don't normally, I I get complaints and I'm sometimes I don't, depending on what people do. Now, Bill, uh, to play devil's advocate, uh, I hate to do that against you, but if if you're talking about, you know, not wanting rentals, I understand that. You know, but y'all's plans are to build rentals, I understand that.
But we're building on.
How would you answer that?
We're building on the footprint of two buildings that were already there.
You're building two rentals? And they're rentals? The houses are rentals. I didn't know.
Yeah, they're rentals.
They're gonna be rentals.
One time, and then the Coleman house and, you know, I've gotten into a lot of trouble. I'm Shands and I own that for tearing down that clinic and that house. A lot of people wanted that left there, and that's a joke. Uh, but you know, that was uh something that we really felt like it would benefit the neighborhood too. So we can either sell the lot as it is, but we've got a footprint there of two buildings. That if we rented those, we wouldn't be doing anything differently than it's already been done there. We're not, the only thing that Logan was asking for and has been approved is to move them, move one line so the buildings wouldn't be supposed to go. That's totally separate from what we're talking about here. So, I mean, as a footprint of a whole building, Shands Hospital is there, I mean, it's not practical to use that, but good if you wanted to. Yeah, all I'm asking you for is to let the neighborhood residents have their day in front of you to express what they want you to hear. And if you don't do that, you don't do it, but I think there's no downside to doing it. They didn't answer your question about why would you be, what would be detrimental about waiting for a public hearing? If you can get an answer to that question, that would be good.
May I say something? I'm Mary Pies. I'm.
Yes, ma'am.
Part of the Ellis family. So it seems to me that I appreciate what you're saying. You're building on a footprint, except you're not because you're moving a lot. Number one.
One lot.
Number two. A lot. That's what I said. Uh, and you're building well, exactly a block down from where we're talking about. At this point in time, simply subdividing a lot. We can't tell you at this point in time if we're gonna build a house and one of us is gonna live there. If we're gonna build something and it might be well, just like you're doing down the way or not. So, and my understanding was the meeting last evening was to address whatever the concerns were. So I fail to understand in what way this is significantly different from what uh you and and your son and whoever are doing down the way. And yes, you could build on the footprint, but as you astutely pointed out, one would be building um the footprint of Shands Hospital lot. Which would consume the majority of that lot except for a small driveway where the ambulances used to come in. Adjacent to the wall that you built there. So it would seem to me that subdividing the lot rather than building on what the footprint was that was previously there. Would be a more reasonable application and use of that space.
So Bill.
Okay.
The topic that y'all finna build.
Yeah, and I had, nobody's ever said we're renting anything there that I hadn't said there. We might sell those houses. So I'm not.
So those.
We just said, we just said, you just said real.
Yeah.
You just said, I just said you and you just said real.
You told me y'all were gonna rent those houses. Where are you building?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You said you.
Man, no.
We don't have a point.
My question is, those people that you can be talking about in the paper, have they voiced their concern about what you're gonna build?
No, they have not. So that that's the that's the difference from, the only difference from my perspective is that no one in the neighborhood has voiced a complaint against what Bill is doing. Uh.
It's Dr. Shands too, it's not just me. Not Shands and I both are doing it.
But at the same time, I don't necessarily, I mean. Um, you know, I I I would like the people to be able to voice their concern. I I don't know, I don't know if it's a legitimate concern or not, and I would like more information about that. Um, cause they're 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 requesting to subdivide the lot. They're don't, they're not planning to to do anything right now that's inappropriate to the neighborhood.
What about down the road?
Well, that's that's the question. That's why I would like, I would like to hear what people have to say and their concerns.
I would think it would be reasonable to let the Ellis family and the residents of the neighborhood make a presentation to you. They can do, they did very well tonight. They can make it.
When you just rezoned the Gruber Moore House, and we're just asking to subdivide a lot, and you've been subdividing lots all over town. Just treat us like everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Well, you live there. You live right next to it.
Yeah, and I don't.
You're stuck.
Yeah, so I I I only, I'm I'm a politician. I represent.
And you're being lobbied by Bill, and you've lived there. I understand that. I understand that.
Bill's not the only one. I mean, although Bill's been influential for sure in all this, but there's more than just. Bill's not the only one, I mean, although Bill's been influential for sure and all this, but there's more than just one neighbor. I wouldn't do anything just one person says.
The neighbors all would be here, this was the time to do it.
They gotta know that, but.
What, what does the sign, what does the sign say that's?
It says special exception.
It says if there's concerns caused.
And apparently this is not a special.
It's a city sign and we can do a scientific city sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My understanding, we do nothing because there's, we're not getting any exception. They made the requirements for the size of lots that are there the way it's zoned, so if we do nothing, they're allowed to do it because the zoning board approved it. Because the square footage is there, they made the requirement. We're not giving them a change to allow them to do something that they're not allowed to do.
Well, then why are we here? We are supposed to be here because the board of aldermen has to approve what the zoning commission did.
Now, we can only dis, not allow them to just because you have concerns. My, we, we've never, we never vote on your property, right? Last month, we didn't vote after the zoning board approved it. We didn't come back and vote yes or no because it meant the requirements, there's such, it meant. Square footage, we're to, to have two lots where they have the square footage for three lots and we didn't.
But there's more to consider according to the Supreme Court, I'm just telling you for sure. Than the square footage and what you can do with lots like this and.
We do have the authority to overturn.
Yeah, so we, we could. We don't vote to approve any of the concerns, there's no, there's no change being made.
We've met the requirements, please treat us like everybody else.
So.
What's the downside to having public hearing? If anybody can tell me a reason we shouldn't have one other than. You think that our, the residents should have been there last night.
Well, Bill, are you an alderman? Are you running the show?
No, I'm just saying I would like for them to get an answer. What, why is it detrimental to y'all?
We're here to do the business, this is what, what we're supposed to do. We're here in a regular meeting. We've met the requirements, the signs were put up the way they were supposed to be put up. This is not a rezoning request. How, how do you know there's not a bunch of people out, outs, out on that neighborhood that uh didn't want, that didn't want rezoned? You just rezoned the Grover Moore House into a, away from residential. How do you know there's not a bunch of people out there that nobody got in contact with?
There was a sign that said rezoning on that.
Well, we have a sign that says what, what ours says, just trying to.
I only got news.
Change the laws.
That's the same thing.
It is the same thing.
Same sign.
So let me ask, I, I, I asked Margaret what was detrimental to you guys? What, what, if we have a public hearing, what are those people that aren't here tonight? With, that are not here with you, what are they gonna say next week that's gonna change their mind anyway?
Then, I don't know what they'll say. I mean, I just know they would like to express themselves to the board of aldermen. And they could give you information, they would maybe change three lots to two lots, maybe not agree to any lot changes. Uh you could do, I mean, the board of aldermen have complete authority in this to do it. Plus it would give them an opportunity to measure the lot. Like pick a phone call like I will on why he had a sign in his place.
Our lots meet the requirements. It's not up, it's not up to the neighbors to say, well, we'll take two, but we won't take three.
Well, I'm here last night.
The only one that's here was uh.
I'm in rock.
I'm in rock.
Yeah, and his wife.
I think Bill sent him.
I didn't see, how did you know he was coming?
Oh, I just thought, I thought you didn't.
Mr. Bill, what are your concerns? You say you don't know if that meets the square foot. What are your concerns?
Cause Main Street is pretty, one of the nicest streets in town. There are no houses, there are no ha, low rent houses there and I, we don't know what's going to be built there. The neighbors, when I say we, I'm talking about all the residents of the neighborhood. And nobody in a nice neighborhood with fairly expensive houses would want their property depreciated by. Houses that are not up to what they should be and I'm a crowded lot, which would change the entire complexion of the neighborhood. And that, and that is not allowed in Mississippi by the Supreme Court. And if, and if you change, if you don't agree with me, that's fine, but I think you should at least let the residents have a hearing. To sit and present themselves and they can't help it that they're out of town and didn't know about this. I, I don't, I didn't go about it myself till I called and found out from Reagan at the hearing. That you're gonna have a hearing on this today. It didn't appear that way on the sign for sure.
Now, we don't.
Is that not a hearing?
Is that not a rent sign in Anthony Penelope's corner lot right there?
I think it's for sales, huh?
It says for sales.
So I needed to advise y'all something. And I would say this, it has nothing to do with parties. Such, the new ordinances are written a little differently than the old ones, which is how we've always done it. And I would rather not go into detail here, but the safe thing to do is.
I'm sorry, could you?
Can you speak up? We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, could you speak up?
I said the new ordinances are written differently than the old ordinances, which is how we've always done business and I don't wanna go into the details right here and right now. I'd rather do that as legal advice project. However, because they are written differently and as I said, this has nothing to do with parties, I'll say the same thing if it was flip. The safe thing to do is have a public hearing and I will tell you specific a while later.
Um, I mean, I, I don't see the harm in, in letting people be heard in the neighborhood. If they don't have a legitimate complaint. Then I will not grant them that right, but I do respond, I don't treat you any differently. I, I resent being, you told me that. Cause I, I don't, I'm not treating you any differently. There have been situations all throughout New Albany. And, and so people, people wanna do stuff and there are neighbors that complain. I'll try to respond to their complaints because they're my constituents, they're who I represent.
I thought the complaints was for rezoning, but I didn't think dividing a lot was.
Yeah, I mean, and I, and I, and I, and I, you know, I tend, yeah, and I, I, I just want to do my due diligence, is all I want to do. I, I don't wanna mistreat you in any way and I have no reason to do that. I've known both parties my entire life and like both parties, uh I have no reason to mistreat you or treat you differently. Um, I uh. I recommend especially with Reagan's advice that we do have this public hearing. If there's no legitimate complaint, then, then y'all should be granted what you've asked for.
So may I ask Mr. Russell, at what point in time, whatever the new ordinances you were describing, come into practice?
In case we've affected quite a while back, a couple, two, three years ago. Uh, but uh, I, I, what I will do is once I have explained what these wants to say to them, I will, I will advise. Eric, you give a copy to all parties here.
Is it something significant? I mean, we all know this and it's been in place for years. I mean, they all know it.
Well, it's public record, you can get a copy. I don't wanna give legal advice to the public, I'd rather give legal advice properly.
So, so my question for you is, when you have implementation of these new ordinances, is that gonna change? What we would be able to do with this particular lot?
With your lot?
Yes.
Uh, it will not change what you can do. It might change the procedure for approving.
The procedure for approving?
Right.
Okay, well, I think we would rather proceed and get approval under. We brought it now because that's what we want to do. We want to utilize this lot, we want to get approval to do what we. Need to do for this lot that it had for years and years and years.
My advice to them was if they want to approve this, the safest way to do that would be with public.
I still can't hear you.
The safest way for them to approve it would be with a public hearing.
The safest way to.
To approve.
Approve that would be with a public hearing.
Yes.
So may I ask you how frequently you have a public hearing on the lot that you're asking to subdivide? Has that ever happened before?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I really don't.
Seems a little odd to me.
Well.
I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm true.
It may, it may not be wrong, but here we are and we have to deal with what the ordinance says.
And that would be a factor in, in any decision that's made, you know, precedent and all that, so. Um, but, yeah.
And, and the point that Mr. Rutledge has not mentioned is that this lot is exactly adjacent to his home. And I think that is why he's uh, he's as interested in what's a zone in that lot. As he is, which I totally understand. You and Yale have a lovely home.
Right.
Uh, so we would like to do what we want to do with the lot that we have owned for many years. That's all we're asking to do.
Yeah, and there's also been just, I mean, I've heard so many different stories and te, people were just unclear about what you were gonna do on the lot. And from what I, I've talked to two of you today, uh there's not any particular plans that I can see.
I don't know who people are.
Yes.
Saying people.
He's told me.
Well, I, I talked to.
We don't have, we don't have plans to build anything.
Yeah, I've talked to Margaret and John and, and I, I went out of my way to call them and, and get their side of story and see what's going on because, because I, and when I say people, I'm talking about the neighborhood, people in the neighborhood.
That, that's what I'm saying is, Mr. Rutledge is saying that.
Well, obviously, you know, you know, Mr. Rutledge is.
Are concerned, well.
The neighborhood's not here. Well, he's here saying, oh, the neighborhood's all upset, the neighborhood's not here.
Yeah, but I've talked to, I've talked to other neighbors.
I'm here, I'm here because of other people out of town that couldn't be here and didn't know about it.
That's why, oh, there's a sign on the lot. There's no way you plan to build any, my family, I don't think, frankly, if I'm wrong, I want the city officials to confirm the songs you've been here. How many housing permits have, has anybody in my family pulled and built a new house here? Have the properties, have they ever pulled a permit, built a house?
Not in ten years.
If y'all would sign an agreement that you don't intend to build anything, we can go home with a big answer.
No, well, if you sign an agreement, you're not gonna build anything on those lots, you just clear it off? No, of course not. We don't have to do that yet.
John just said you're not gonna build anything.
You're not running the show.
We have immediate plans to do.
We don't have to do that.
We want to subdivide it to maximize the use of our property complying with the rules that the board or the previous boards have set. The minimum square footage, the minimum frontage and now's the time to do it. Other than we're doing that, we'd like to be able to do that too. It's a big, big lot. We have no plans to build a three-story hospital. That's what the footprint was.
My opinion is, and I'm gonna make the motion that we do set a public hearing for the next meeting, uh based on the legal recommendation of Reagan. Uh, and uh, like I said, I will hear anyone who did the complaints, uh but we can, we can parse this out publicly where people that are here in the neighborhood. Can hear your side of the story and they can voice their concerns publicly, uh and is that, is that wrong to let people voice their concerns?
I mean, work that, it complies with your rules that you've said on subdividing a big lot into three smaller lots. That comply with all the rules that the city has provided.
And they can, and they can deny my motion.
Well, we got a motion, we gotta get it.
Well, I have it, yeah. I will make the, I will make the motion that we set a public hearing to allow those who want to.
We don't have a second, it's over anyway, go have a second.
I'll second it, just in support of you, but it's your, it's your work, your backyard. Then we should be able to hear, hear it all.
I've got a motion to second any other discussion questions.
Yeah, I guess, I guess with some parts, you've talked to the neighbors, um did you not inform them that they needed to be here? If they had concerns, how, how many?
I, I, I did and I should have done that earlier, but they couldn't be here tonight. Um, I, I, yes, I did tell them absolutely that they should be here if they have concerns about it and uh they're not here and that's presumably on their.
But I assume that they told you their concerns, um so you, you know what their concerns are.
Mm-hmm.
What were their concerns?
Well, uh, I think we've already kinda hashed this out, that they, they're just worried about there being three small lots in that area where there are. Larger houses or big lots and they don't think it's consistent with the neighborhood. I'm not saying I agree with them. Uh, they're, they don't think it's consistent with the trajectory of the neighborhood. And I think it's a reasonable concern. I'm not saying I agree with that, but I do think they already heard and what are we here for if we're not allowing? I, I think they already heard and I have a legitimate complaint at all or a legitimate concern at all, but um. That's, that's, that's up to y'all. Y'all can, y'all can vote against me for sure, uh but that's my recommendation, especially in light of what Reagan said. Uh, so, but I'm afraid it won't be there.
Are there any other questions or concerns or comments?
Reagan, I, I'm very concerned with what you said, is, is why?
Well, I was gonna offer you the opportunity to go to a uh, a uh executive session and explain it and we can do that afterwards or we can do it right now.
I just wanna understand that because again, I feel like. Well, I, and I'm, I don't know how that works doing that, but I wanna understand your thoughts behind this because I agree with what you're saying. Uh, and I, I also agree with what Parks is saying, is people should have a hearing, I mean, have the opportunity to talk. But I, again, what you said, I don't understand why, if, I don't know. If we, when we do it, we do it now or what? I don't understand why, why you said what you said.
Hold on a minute.
So you want to make a motion for an executive session, you have those ideas. They want me to say it, but I have to make it.
But if you've got issues with it, I, I don't think, I mean, then I, I mean, we, we've got a motion and said. To make a motion to go into executive session, so let's run on this first.
Well, can we just, they can withdraw, I guess we'll go with that.
Um, if, if we can go into the executive session to receive legal advice and then they can leave, they can come back and let's, let them know our decisions. Can that be done?
Yeah, but the final vote, whether or not to put a public hearing is done, hopefully, so that you can watch.
Yeah, so we'll reopen the meeting after we get them with this. Yeah, um, okay, I, I'm willing to rescind my motion uh to, to hear Reagan's legal advice.
Great, right, great. Most of rescinding, now we need to, y'all going to executive session with any of them? Considering plea and advice.
So, man.
I'm looking Keith, uh, say, give a nail in the other course to discuss, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
All right, we'll be in the executive session. I'll give you, and then we'll take back it.
Uh, I made a motion that we set a public hearing um to consider the Ellis property in question and the level of Shands property in question.
Go to the left here.
What, two public hearings?
Two public hearings, but at the same time.
For the same day?
Same day.
Except the next, uh, next meeting versus the day that.
It may, the first. Do I start this out there with? I'll start this out there with. All right, check, I'll be back in a second. Within, it has, if we do this within thirty days or can we set the date? If you're gonna be out of town on the first, I won't be out of town on the first, can we do it on the eighth? Or is that pushing?
Think I looked this up because we're waiting in a public hearing, guys, to get a regular meeting. Thank you.
Oh, and that's good, regular meeting, okay. I'm not sure what time to do this, but.
He's a.
It's early in the morning, I may have to call him to report to him.
Cheers.
Yeah, first.
The night would be a Tuesday, the first.
Time to say.
I've.
I don't think it's right. I think it's my first.
Yeah, I like that.
First.
I like so many Tuesday.
Okay, I like that.
Are y'all gonna, are some of y'all gonna play back a year? I think I'm bigger than that.
What, is that the?
It would be, well, the proposal is for the first, which is the next regular meeting. Um, we could potentially change that. First is the next regular meeting, do you want first?
But yeah, we have to have a regular meeting on the first, because that's the square man. Can, we can't, we can't be sworn in before the first, is that correct, Ray? Can you swear in on thirty or is that the one I give back, the third or the fourth?
I'm choosing not to, he doesn't, but yeah, I think.
Third.
They asked me first.
We'll figure that out.
All right, so yeah, we can do it on Thursday, go to.
Can I do it on Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we gotta do it on the first.
So when it?
No, we can't.
No.
First.
We can't.
You're in the public hearing, don't just.
Yeah. It doesn't have to be on the first, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be on the first, is what you're saying, yeah.
The public hearing doesn't have to be on the first.
Yeah, it can be an express meet. Yeah, I think.
The eighth?
Yeah, it would be nice. Maybe it was, you just have to set up.
Yeah, Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
I'll do it.
Eighth? Are you, are you good with that?
Sure, my, my, hold on one second.
Yeah, I'll make it plenty of.
I really think that might be.
Well, you can call in.
Yeah, I can call in, and worse comes to worse, but yeah, I do have a minimum trip on that week. But I will, I will call in. If we have-
I just won't be here, I mean, I feel free to-
John, you, you're gonna be out by time.
I'll close the date, I'll be back.
Could, could we do it? There's no sooner time we could do it, I guess, because of thirty days.
You got nothing on the future?
What about the advertisement for the public hearing we already have? That's gonna be different from Mr. Bill's property, but we already have a public hearing, basically.
I would have to, uh, I would have to get that out basically this tomorrow, to, yeah, before Thursday, after that, I've got to get it to the paper to be in the kit.
In next week's paper?
Um, to meet the deadline of the fourteen days and stuff, since we only have paper one time.
Could we do it on the tenth?
I mean, they don't have to do it on Tuesday, do they? When you can be here on, when can you, you don't have to do it on Tuesday, do you?
No.
No, I'm supposed to be gone first Wednesday, July.
Would the tenth work?
Yeah, I think, yeah, later sometime.
You'll be here?
I'll be here, I'll be here on the tenth.
Tenth would be a Thursday.
Tenth or eleventh, eleven is appropriate. See him?
I don't need a motion, so the public hearing on both properties for, what y'all agree on the tenth?
Is that working for you?
So is that working for you?
As far as I know, yeah. But you're not gonna be here?
I'll be here on the tenth, I won't be, I'm on a mission trip to the first through the seventh, I'll be in Fort Worth.
Alright, I make a motion to set, uh, a public hearing regarding both of these properties on Thursday, July.
Five thirty? Five thirty.
At five thirty.
Okay.
Ah, y'all ready to move, I'll say.
I'll say.
Second, my group.
Thirty.
About thirty.
About thirty.
Any other questions or discussion, all in favor? Uh, any move, one in care? Uh, we have one night, do you, any night? Yeah. Now, we can move on to rest, can't I get it?
I'll go one more time.
Huh? Well, let's know, let's see, as soon as Jim doesn't let y'all have anything to change, understand the reasons. Action agenda? We've already done two qualifications. Done utility tax, that's considered.
Send them to Reagan and to the county, that's exciting, word, huh?
And most, he has a second, but will, any other questions or discussion, all in favor?
Any opposed, so, uh, then, that'll lead to most to adjourn.
For, I just wanted to say, from all of us, thank you for twenty years of service. I thank you for the, the cities, for the last twenty years, it's, it's been impressive and honored to have served with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you've done, it's been a pleasure serving.
Yep, me too.
Alright, any other reason? Now, I, I need a most to adjourn. Yeah, two most, one in a second. All in favor?
Hi.